Okay, welcome to all city council and those watching from home. We've got a work session here for December 12th. Two issues on the work session to discuss. Proposed policy on appointments to boards and commissions and then just an update on TMDL treatment and where we are in that process with the state. So, let's start with item one, which is the policy on appointments to boards and commissions.
Okay, Mr. Mayor and council members. You know, for some time now, we've been having discussions on our boards and commissions, how to make them, especially the ones that you have control over, how to make the appointments uniform, where their precincts, where they come from, whether we're going to establish that or not. So, we've had lots of discussions with you. We sent you a questionnaire at one time with several questions. And in front of you is the responses that I received. I think we provided that in the past. But in front of you tonight is the responses that we got from those questions. I also went out and put a question out on the municipal clerk's website asking what other localities did. And we got those responses. I took those responses and real responses. And laying on top of your pile is the policy on appointments to boards and commissions. And there are some, they're listing in those blank, and there's some do this, do that, a selection process. So, that's in front of you. And Rania is going to do the PowerPoint presentation that was in her packet where we have presented that proposed policy to you and are seeking some final direction tonight from you as to where you want to go forward with making any changes.
Okay. The PowerPoint presentation is really just a recasting of the central policy questions that were identified either by your questions, your comments, or in some cases, general comments from other clerks and other, other places. What we hope to do, we go through each one and see if there's a consensus, which doesn't necessarily mean unanimity among the council members, but if there are consensus on points, one or all of them, what we would like to do then is bring back to you at your first January meeting, a policy that reflects your consensus for a formal consideration and if you deem it actionable at that point for, for adoption at that point. The, you ready to proceed on the basis?
Yes.
Okay. The first question, and you will recall, we, we worked on this last year. And we jogged one way and then we jogged the other way. But the, the question here, first one, board bank application, should you, should you submit more detailed information than the, than what we have? And you may recall, last January or so, the council decided yes. The following month, we decided that, that the additional submittal material should be optional. And predictably, once it went to optional, the standard submission package materials sort of reverted back to what they had been. So, the, the first question then is, do we want to make as a part of this process the requirement that people do something beyond simply fill out the board bank application? To talk about their interests, their specific training, their experience. As you may recall, from the materials we presented last year, or I guess earlier this year, we also asked questions in the draft on, had you had business before this committee or board before? And how did that go? You know, that kind of thing. So, there was no surprises for anyone. So, that'll stop talking and ask for direction if you have direction to give.
Okay, council. It's kind of up to looking for consensus.
Yeah. I, I think strongly, yes, they need to fill out an application. And it shows interest. It stops any, any, any situation where there may appear to be favoritism. And so, if they put in an application and that, that at least shows their interest, it also gives us the information that we have used in the past to, to help distinguish between applicants.
It might be helpful to have a couple of extra lines and maybe just one on the application that indicated after they indicated which particular board or commission they wish to serve on, that it would say, what experience have you had that would support that particular position? Just something, rather than having to have a whole nother letter, but just something on the application itself that told us that somebody had some extra interest or expertise in a particular field that they would like to participate in.
Okay. So, this isn't, this isn't really a fundamental change. We have a board bank application today. The resume or letter is optional. Is there any feeling that the resume should be anything other than optional?
I really don't think so. I, you know, you may have somebody submitted an application to be on a board or a commission that doesn't have a formal resume, you know? And it might be very well qualified. And I think a formal resume is just not necessary.
Not a formal resume, but something to say, this is what I think I bring to the table.
That's the application.
Well, I think, I think Ray's suggesting to have a line, you know, what, what do you, what do you feel like your qualifications ought to be on this board?
So, yes, on the application resume, it's optional, because as it is now, right?
This question also goes a little bit deeper. This question says submitted for all. That means that anytime we have a vacancy, right now, we go to our present board bank application file. Some of those have been on file for a long, long time. What I mean by this question is, if I have a vacancy tomorrow, I'm not going to the old application file anymore. I'm going to solicit new applications. So, that each time you get, have a vacancy, you're going to be looking at an entirely new pool of people who have just submitted. And what this does is prevents me having to write them to say, are you still interested? Because what that has created over time is when you make that contact, they think they're being considered for appointment. And then when they're not selected, they feel hurt. So, that, that is the gist of this question. For all openings, I would just solicit new interest.
That will surely slow us down.
I would, I would suggest that we put another line on that application that says, would you like to keep your application open for more than just this one time? And if so, how long?
Or establish that we...
If they say forever, that's fine.
And the next question, county clears it up anyway.
Right.
On one year.
So, do we want to let them decide to keep it for two years?
Or should we say we keep things on file for two years or one year or whatever?
Let them decide. You know, they might, they may not be interested in having their name considered multiple years.
We'll let them have the option. Is it this a one-time shot or keep it on file for a year? Is that what we're...
Or keep it on file for...
They keep it on file for...
For eight.
In other words, if they want to keep their application on file for five years, let them stay that. And we'll keep it for five years.
There are many positions that determine is four years, you know? Three years. If, if you only keep it there for one year, if somebody comes off of it, they don't get opportunity to apply for it, except they do go through the application process a second time.
I, I think that year, a year flies by really quick in city business, as we all know from our time here.
It's four years. I mean, keep it until the next cycle, whatever comes up. If you're, you know, at large, well, it's four years anyway, or represented from one of the precincts, it's still four years for one of the two seats. So, I mean, four years sounds reasonable. And if you're not selected, well, you can submit again.
Well, maybe, all right, well, then maybe say, have a statement that says, we will keep your board bank application active for four years unless you otherwise don't want that one.
Well, you know, that, that turns out to be the next question, okay?
Well, that's what I was saying, the next question.
Before we go too far, let me ask this one thing, because I don't want to miscommunicate here. Does this mean that there's a separate board bank application for each area of interest?
No. That's a good question, because we have people who apply for four, five, five things or a shopping list.
They usually do that. They list the one that we're, we have open, and they will list all other boards of interest on that application.
Does that mean that you'd have to put it, make five, five different copies and put them in five different files?
Well, I think, I think what it comes back to is, we're spending a lot of time in the office trying to make sure that our board bank applicants are still interested, that they're still interested in the opening that's there. And we're doing it, basically, we're seeing an application which may be aimed at a particular board, but yet they've got five other boards that are, that are discussed. So, I think we just need to make sure that it'd be cleaner, I think, if you had one for each board. But I'm not saying that we should go that way.
Is there a chance that we're toying with making this electronic? Is that a complicated process? It seems like that might make it easier, but starting that would probably be difficult.
Some folks might miss out.
Well, but if, I think they could come in and be two, one application.
Downloading a template and emailing it back to us is real simple, and I think people could probably do that now.
I was thinking more of a database, once we've collected the information.
Well, maybe so.
So, the answer is no, we're not doing that.
We're not at the, at the moment. When we talked about this before, and you talked about people writing their paragraphs of interest and all, if you're applying for five positions, you want separate paragraphs? This is, this plan works good until you actually put it in motion.
That's correct.
And then there's, there's infinite variations. And we're just trying to come up with a consistent process. And if the consistent process is people just throw in what, we like the one we have, which is pretty consistent with, with what some of you are talking about, we're good with that, too. Please, please know that.
Does anybody have an issue with doing exactly what we do today? On this one question?
Only if it's causing trouble, I think, what I'm hearing from Judy is that it's causing trouble that she has to interact with people who are, have her feelings.
It's causing problems on the other end where after a couple of times that they've been contacted, take school board for example. They tell, they then tell us, take my name off. Apparently, I'm not good enough. Although they don't understand, you have one vacancy and it's just that...
Fifteen.
I don't know that that's a bad thing.
And fifteen applicants.
With that type of a personality.
Put a disclaimer on the form that simply says your application will be kept on file for, you want to say four years or whatever. If you wish to have your name removed prior to that time, please notify this office. If they do, fine. If they don't, and they say, well, I'm not interested anymore, well, that's okay, too. But it might cut down on some of it.
It's, I don't think it's the people that have been on for three years that we're experiencing this. This is the people that have had applications in, going back several city managers.
But at the same ti, at the same time, when we had an individual for a recent appointment and who had stopped into your office on several occasions and said, you know, where do I stand? And then we invited the person in for interviews, he says, to heck with you. I don't want it anymore.
Right.
I mean, so, I mean, you know, we can't win. I mean, you know, it's...
I would, I would remind council, you know, it's, it's not a perfect science. And we're not, we're not going to, to solve, hurt, you know, some feelings are always going to be hurt. And I don't think that's the intention of city council, but obviously, that's just part of, of a situation that we really can't control by this policy.
But I would think, Gene, if, if a person put down four different things, if we could have four different files for that one individual that showed that he was school board, planning commission, BZA, in Wetlands.
It'd be easier, I think, than searching the banks.
At least then we'd know that when it came up, when the Wetlands came up, you'd pull his name and whoever he represented, you know, if it was a Western, Eastern, or Central, or at large, we could contact him and say, okay, you know, are you interested in the Wetlands position? I mean, otherwise...
But that's an administrative thing. So, what I'm, so what I'm saying is, if they fill out the current application they've got today, and they wrote four different boards, what I'm hearing us say is just put the application in four separate files for whatever they've picked, or however many files they've picked, so that when we say we're going to pick somebody for the BZA, we'll pu, pick out the BZA board. Okay?
And for whatever limit we decide on the next slide.
Yeah, next slide is some standing line.
You want to go to the next slide?
Absolutely.
And I think we're addressing what you just are discussing, whether when we pull those applications, would I continue to contact them? Or would I just give them to you as council members? If it's in your precinct, then the next slide would say, you would contact them if you have a real interest. And so, they would only then be contacted by council if there's an interest in them.
Unless we wanted to interview.
I think, I think, I think if you say the resume would be kept on, or the application would be on, on hand for four years, that kind of answers the question of, are they, you know, we don't have to contact them if a vacancy occurs. And I think you leave it up to us to go and get them and, and bring them in or whatever. My opinion.
I'm, I'm right there with you. The only, my only fear is that we don't keep up with people, you know, they move in, some people move and the like, or, and I don't want to set us up for a situation where we appoint somebody who truly is no longer in the community because we think they're still in the board bank application and they're not there.
Well, we're going to get to the interview question in a minute.
So, we have to have a, we have to have a concrete way of making sure, whether it's that the precinct owner, or if it's an at-large seat, that we contact them, or are we asking city staff to contact them? That's, I think, really what you want to know.
Well, once, once we selected those that we would want to interview, and those people were contacted, then that could be one of the questions, are you still interested? And since they're being asked to interview, they wouldn't be upset if they said yeah or no. They would have that opportunity.
Okay. I can go with that. Hey, Frank, one thing, you got your paper laid on the mic. I want people at home to make sure they hear.
And it flew its tones.
Yeah, right.
Well, before we get too far away from this, I, I've heard the, the number of four years put out two or three times. And in my preparation for tonight, my first mark down there was four years. And then I slashed it out, and I said, and then I said five years, okay? And the reason I said five is, suppose someone fills out an application and they really want to be on board A, but someone else gets selected for board A, and they agree to take a position on board B. And then they're there for four years, then the position comes back open on board A, and then they have to go back and reapply again. If they stay for five years, they'll at least go through one full council term for any, any one council person, and any one four-year term on any board, so that would lay over for at least one more year to give them an opportunity to get the one that they really wanted to work on. Was that loud enough?
Yeah, I think so. Now...
That makes sense to me, and I would agree.
As long as there's an expiration date, I really don't care about the number. I just think it should be an expiration date.
Okay. Everybody goes with five years?
Five years.
All right, let's go with five years.
All right. We talked about that. So, the idea would be, you all would, if you have a short list of people, before you got together to discuss that short list, one of you would touch base with that person to confirm that, if you didn't know them, that they were still interested and that you thought they might be a good enough fit to enter into the larger discussion with the council. Right? That looks good for us. Okay? This is, this is one that is, gotten a lot of different comments in my time here, whether or not we, you would be interviewing folks, and if so, when? And one of the things that you need to think about when you think about this question is, don't think just about when you have a vacancy, because a reappointment opportunity is actually just a vacancy you're filling with the person who has the spot. And so, if your expectation is different, we just need to know what that is.
These are four slides. Okay. I think you've come in actually and know that we don't.
I would say always and all for one and two personally.
And I contend, I'm leaning that direction unless we have every single one of us already interviewed the candidate. We just had interviews a month ago, and I personally don't feel like we need to re-interview that person if the same vacancy comes up, or even if a similar vacancy comes up.
Or if a same vacancy on the same board comes up, I agree with you. But if we interviewed for something totally different and a vacancy comes up on something else, then we might want to talk to that person about whatever else just came up as opposed to what we discussed previously.
Well, a lot of our, a lot of our board banks are, are district-specific. Okay? So, what does that mean? The district representatives want to interview because that's all, if you look at all the appointments we do throughout a year, that's a lot of appointments and a lot of interviews.
And some of them are every year or every two years.
We may think that somebody who we interviewed for a certain position two months ago, when it comes up again ten months later, we see two more names that seem to be really, you know, sharp. We may want to bring those two in also, and the, and the third person who we interviewed 10 months ago, or whatever. I mean, I don't want to just say, oh, because we interviewed so-and-so, you know, it's a lock.
I kind of like, and I, I don't think there's a right answer to this.
Is it gut cold?
I think, I think it's when deemed necessary. And I think that on the specific district appointments, it's really only between the two members of that district. And then the, the at-large can be talked about, you know? I think we're pretty honest communicators. If there's just somebody, some person that, where we can't support, we'll tell the, the district member. But I don't believe that every interview is going to be done by the entire council. I want to be a little realistic here in how much time that would take for the entire council to do an interview for every board position every time.
I recognize that issue, too.
Well, I'm, I'm kind of leaning towards interviews for the first five of those boards. I think, I think some, I think some of the other boards, I don't really think interviews are necessary.
I agree. But I would, I would tell you that I'm, you know, for Wetlands Board, or ARB, or any of that, the only thing to date that we have really interviewed for are school board and the planning commission. And I think normally, you can come through, and since most, the majority of the rest of them are always district picks, that only a couple of people need to pick up the phone and talk to them like I've seen members of council do. And, you know, I think that's a good way to do it. I, I just don't think there's a right answer to this.
Yeah, but what we, by not having a right answer, we have a very inconsistent policy. We say, okay, we're not going to interview this time, and the next time, we say, well, we are going to interview. So, we need to make it consistent, whatever we decide, I think.
Well, I, I want to back up Gene's comment about when deemed necessary. And the reason I say that is, suppose someone was appointed to the board and, and we have a two-term limit on that board, that person's term comes due, they've done a really good job, we've seen, we all agree that we'd like to reappoint that same person back for a second term. I don't think you need to go into interviews.
Well, I think in that case, it would be important to reinforce the fact that you've done really good and we're proud of you.
I think that last one on the list has cost us some businesses in town also. Maybe it's not through not interviewing people, but getting their philosophies or whatever. So, I mean, I might be inclined to include them in being interviewed. I mean, you know...
Just make sure we, just like I said, just make sure that council knows what they're signing themselves up for. There's a lot, and I, I have no problem supporting it, you know? And it's easy to say right now that you can support that. But in the middle of budget season, when we have two or three of these, and we know that we've taken whole nights to go through five interviews for school board, we're going to do that for the BZA, the EDA, the Wetlands Board, the ARB, the Planning Commission, the school board.
Part of this, too, I'm, I'm thinking, perhaps part of that answer is to vet the applications down so that we don't interview everybody who put in an application, but we interview the top one or two that we're considering putting on the board. Or even maybe only interviewing the one who's, you know, who, who looks most qualified if nobody else can compete with that. But at, at that point, we are touching base, as Carrie and Frank mentioned. And I would like to meet, I, there are a lot of people on boards that I've never met. I don't know who they are. I didn't appoint them. I may be reappointing them, just because that's what we do, but I would like to meet these people.
It does take time, but I think it's time well spent, and it enhances the importance of the board or commission that we're appointing people to, that they come and talk with us.
I'm, I'm absolutely fine with it, just understand what it is that, that you're saying, because it is a tremendous cost in time. And this council's time will be challenged in the next year.
We've done a lot of that.
Should we maybe say...
If it's a reappointment and we know we're going to reappoint somebody, to me, interviewing is really a waste of everybody's time. But I mean, I, I kind of like the idea of when deemed necessary. I think that...
I think really it's the consensus of council, and that's what we've done to date. And I, I think that's still the way that, you know, there are times when the thought process is well-founded, and there's still six other members of council, you know, that I think that as a group, we make better decisions than sometimes policy does. So, okay? So, I would just say, when deemed necessary by the majority of council, and we'll improve that communication between the council members to see how we proceed with that particular opening.
Well, after I've been on the school board for a term, I had enough experience and stuff. If there were things I would have liked to have talked to city council about, and you don't get that opportunity just anytime where you can come in and talk in a closed session to, you know, to council.
But we just met with the school board last week, because we are making round robins of each and every board member through the year in addition to these appointments.
True, but it wasn't like a closed session either.
No, and I don't think, I don't think it should be.
When I was, when I was on the school...
But our interviews, our interviews are...
Well, when I was on the school board, if I felt strongly about an issue, I called every council member and met with them. And I think that's what we need to depend on their doing. I don't think an interview is the time for them to come vent their frustrations or tell us something that they really need to tell. They need to tell us when it's pertinent and when it happened.
Yeah, that as well. But I would have thought that an interview would have been a good thing.
Maybe, Carrie, I think maybe you're calling it an interview, but what you're really saying is just touch base with some of our reappointments, which may be, may be as deemed necessary. Might work.
I think, I think we understand where you're, where you're going.
It has to be the full council, and if it's a typical precinct appointment, if the two...
That can be a phone interview.
Precinct can agree to the appointment, and they can talk with them even by phone or whatever. And that could be considered at least a type of interview.
Well, here's, I don't want to get the wrong message out to the public. I think that's exactly what's going on today. Okay? I think, and I, I know that council members, I know when, as a Western precinct, and I'm sure that, that the Western precinct members still call the people from the Western precinct, and they say, are you still interested? You know, I see you, you've been on here for some time, you know, we have that board bank application. I know that's occurring, and I know there's a lot of thought process by the members of council when they come in, and the two, the two members from that precinct agree that they're going to nominate a person. They've already had that fundamental conversation. I don't want anybody at home to get the opinion that we haven't already been doing this. So, I, I don't think there's a right answer to that question. And, you know, I think that there's the wisdom of the seven, and I'm a big believer in the wisdom of the seven, that the seven of us, 99.9% of the time, will probably make the right decision.
Well, I, I want to extend it just a little bit further. I do think that when deemed necessary is the best answer of the ones we've got there. But I also believe that if we had, if we decide that we are going to interview, I think it ought to be the seven and not just the two from the precinct. The two from the precinct will, will make a suggestion, but as we've seen on recent interviews, we had one or two total surprises. And so, if two people sat down and made, and make that decision, we may miss a total surprise. And so, I, I think, I think the... And so I, I think, I think the, the councilman from the district ought to, ought to make the suggestion as which we prefer, but I think if we're going, if we deemed it necessary to interview, then I think it ought to be the seven.
I think we're deemed necessary. I mean, I, I agree with Bud that I think we can decide, you know, among ourselves, you know, either defer an appointment for a month until we say, hey, we want to interview, or, you know, go ahead and, and do it. But I don't think always and only are, you know, apply. I think, you know, the answer is C.
C.
When deemed necessary.
When deemed necessary.
Okay.
And do we ever decide on all or some or what?
When as deemed necessary.
I think once you answer when deemed necessary, I think that's.
I think your answer is both. Yeah, I agree with that.
You're really deferring to the wisdom of the seven.
I will tell you that I make up a list of, beginning in January, of all appointments throughout the year by month, and I will provide that to you. And I'll also provide, start providing all board bank applications for those appointments a month in advance to you so that that will make your decision much easier.
That'd be great.
Very good.
All right. And this is a question, I don't think we have a staff hanging on this, but on whether or not we should, given the current setup, all appointments shall be at-large unless otherwise determined by, by state code or city charter. It's a general philosophy question, unless you have some specific ones in mind.
You know, you talked about that at one of our meetings, that rather than have some of our boards, such as the planning, well, the Planning Commission is set by our charter, but some of the others, Library Advisory Board, Parks and Rec, set theirs by their own bylaws. But there are some that are by precinct that are just because that's the way it is. And, and some, someone, one of you mentioned they should all be at, at-large and not precinct specific.
Is, the school board is by city charter, correct? And the Planning Commission? I, I think personally that the, the BZA and the Wetlands Board should also be by precinct compared by the makeup of the council.
What are they currently? Are they?
I think they're currently by precinct. I think they're currently by precinct or district. BZA, because we just appointed.
BZA, I don't, I've got my list here. I don't think they are. And Wetland, BZA is not.
No.
Well, it's sort, no, you've got about four people there now that are from Western, one Central, one Eastern. Same thing occurs on your Wetlands Boards, but that's because when we have solicit those applications, you don't necessarily get applicants from the precincts. It's been very difficult for you all to get people from those specific precincts to do that. You've tried to get it precinct-specific, but you don't get the application. So you'd have to, you'd have to pound the pavement.
BZA is currently at random.
Yeah.
Well, I'd rather have to do a little bit of work. As geographically diverse as this town is, as small as it is, it's still very geographically diverse in height, if nothing else. And I think it should, all of them should be by precinct personally. And if you have to go beat the bushes a little, I think that's just something, you know, you'd have to do.
I don't think the EDA or the ARB, you're not going to get it by precinct because they, the ARB especially, they have to be by profession.
That's by state, that's state law, though, that dictates all that.
So, like I say, the.
EDA I think is important. No, I agree with you with that.
The four that I think are important to be by precinct are the School Board, Planning Commission, BZA, and Wetlands. They're the ones that impact people the most. Now, the Wetlands gets kind of, is it the Wetlands Board that we have alternates?
BZA.
BZA.
The Wetlands does, too.
That gets kind of convoluted there because the alternates are not going to be by.
Well, we have two alternates, though. We've got three alternates on the Wetlands also, right?
You have alternates on both.
I'm looking, yes.
I don't know how many.
I think that the EDA is also important to have representation from every section on as well, because I think that's, if, I mean, if we're going to bring in some big something to help the economy in Pecosin, I think that each area of Pecosin should be represented because different.
Parks and Rec's the same, I'd say.
That's true, Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec has their own bylaws, and they actually have more than one or two members per precinct. They really are overly covered by precinct, and they are, and they have several at-large members on there as well.
What are the, what are the current commissions that do not require precincts?
It's, it's got all kind of coded requirements.
IDA, Wetlands, and the BZA.
Okay. So do we really have a, the only one on there that I've heard discussion on is the IDA or EDA, which same. The BZA is basically by profession, if I'm not mistaken.
No, that's ARB.
I'm sorry, ARB. Well, I thought the, the BZA had a realty person and they had a.
They're, they're appointed, isn't there a school for the BZA for class?
Yes. And that's the other thing that, that.
Yeah, it should be on the application.
That we need to.
Which you tend, yeah.
Right. Because we have some that require specific training.
Or suggest that it be attended. Yeah, I don't know whether you can make it mandatory, but the planning and I think the BZA, there are two that have requirements. I don't know about the Wetlands, no.
Okay, we have four there that are not. I guess, why don't we just take that one for action as a council to send in which board you want, and, and as I'm watching the clock here as we approach the main meeting.
Well, I just think the EDA is not so much by district or precinct or whatever, but it's by specific job-related businesses. I mean, I think that's where we started with the EDA or the IDA, was to bring in people in banking, in, in real estate, and other fields that could attract businesses.
Right.
And I think we didn't worry about where they came from. It was more their background and business acumen and contacts.
Right.
But if West, if the Eastern Precinct is left off entirely, that would not be appropriate. So I think I'd be okay with saying at least one person from each precinct.
But I think, I think what you've got to consider is the EDA, we want to put people on that that have business contacts.
We don't, we don't care what precinct they come from.
But the people in my precinct do care that they are represented. That's my concern.
But what I'm saying is it's an open competition, and it's not really a competition, but it's an open board. So we all, we all weigh in on that one, you know. If, if you were going to negotiate, I'd say, why don't you just say, because the other thing is, some of these boards have changed over my time on council because of lack of, and I hear what Councilman Freeman is saying about, well, we've got to go out there and push some people. But I've also seen us relax this because of the lack of applicants, and this has nothing to do with Eastern Precinct, or it could, in fact, it's been Western Precinct at times, that they're not interested in all the boards. I would say at least one. I could go with that philosophy so that there's at least one member from each precinct on every board.
And if you need to increase the number of members just to get people on there, I'm okay with that, too. But I do think it's important that our geographical area is represented as well as the, the business or skill set.
I'm good, but sometimes, sometimes I do think we get ourselves lost with, you know, we're still only six miles wide. You know, we're not, we're not.
If you look at the EDA, they're all, almost all from the Western.
Right, which the people on my end of the world might take offense at.
So let's go to.
I've not heard any.
You don't live on my end of the world, really, either.
Well, but we had a member from.
Actually, y'all, y'all represent the same precinct.
And he was, we had an Eastern member.
Okay.
Right, I just want to make sure we always do.
Can we move on?
Can we come to a consensus that it's at least one member from each precinct? Does anybody, I, I think it'll be easy enough to do.
For most boards, the, the EDA, I feel strongly.
For these three boards that, not ARB, ARB is standalone, but BZA, EDA, and the third one was.
Wetlands.
Wetlands. At least one member from each precinct.
I think one of the boards you don't see affiliation with as far as where they're from is the EDA.
I agree.
I think it's just names and term limitations. Right?
That's, you're right that we don't see that, but I believe we should see that because the people on the Eastern end of Pecosin feel very strongly about, a lot of people where I live are the ones who've been here a long time, and they feel very strongly about change. And I think that they need to have a voice at the table. So at least they're representing the fears, if nothing else, of the people in, in the Eastern Precinct.
There's a board bank application form waiting.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
They can apply, and, you know, we can deem it necessary to interview.
And requiring one from each precinct takes care of the issue.
But if you don't find the background, that's tough.
I agree, but cross that bridge when we get there.
Bankers, real estate.
About all those businesses we got, we're missing.
The yacht club? Yeah.
Well, you're also going to have to transition to that. I mean, it's not like we're going to turn around tomorrow and we don't have the right board bank app, you know, we don't have the right bank applicants. You're going to have to transition there.
Yep.
Why don't we just see if we have a problem in the future?
I wish, I wish we had more time, we could hear from like Deb Callis in the background, who kind of is the chairperson with the EDA, and Debbie with the other boards and whatever else, to see their thoughts about, you know, precincts or districts or whatever else, how the cert, how the current boards line up. But we're running out of time. Next time.
Would we all have a problem agreeing that one from each district?
That's what I would like.
I would. I, I don't, I don't think that's appropriate for the EDA, it just really doesn't.
I don't either. Unless you find a, a solid person from that, from that precinct, fine. Otherwise.
We can have an understanding that we will try and do that. I don't have a problem with that.
It's a policy that you can change.
I think it's a, yeah, I think, I think what Wayne mentioned is that we're setting a policy, we're not setting a law. So we'll just try and adhere to that, and if we have a issue with the applicants that we have, we'll pick the best.
So that's with one, at least one, you're saying? With at least one, we'll try that?
As a policy.
Right.
If a problem presents itself, then we can.
Sure, we move around.
Don't have to stick with it. Okay?
And that kind of assures us a more even representation.
Sure.
When we give you the list of the people and the appointments coming up, even if it's not a district slot, we can indicate which district the people live in, so we give you a constant sense of where the things are coming from. This is probably, if it's, if it's an aspirational objective of the council, it'll probably be pretty easy to meet over time as opposed to a designated spot. Want to move on?
Yes.
All right. This has been one that has been talked about several times by several of you and some of the people that sat in the seats that you sit in previously with regard to, not counting those people whose terms are already set by charter or by code, should there be term limits for all other boards and commissions? And again, like all of these, the staff doesn't really have an opinion. We're, we're restating the questions that you have posed to each other. I'd like to know what you think about that.
I'll tell you what my concern is. I, I am, well, I'm actually in the middle, but I think that part, a problem that we have had in this council is that when somebody gets onto a board, we don't want to replace them because it would hurt their feelings. And just, and, and for that reason, we keep reappointing people, and they may be very good on that board, but what that does is it does not bring in new people. And I want to make sure that we are, there's always some sort of a, an encouragement for council to be training the next generation and bringing them up. And the way it has been, which is, well, we can make that our policy by default, has not been working. So if nothing else, I would encourage us as a council to go through some of the current boards and those people who've been on for more than a dozen years or so, consider replacing them with somebody younger. And, and not to say that those people can never come back on, but let them sit out a year or something. So I, I think it's important to continually bring in fresh blood. You're laughing at me.
I think as long as.
Let's say with someone different.
Yeah, don't, don't age to scare them.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I am young, just run here, I might not.
And I did laugh, yeah.
I think the example of the school board, that works very well. You see, we've always had, you know, we have three members of the former school board members here on council now. And I think that that's a very clear indication that it allows people to experience some level of the operations of the city and then move them to another level if they so desire. So I would, I would think that some form of term limits would be appropriate on virtually everything.
And I'll vote yes.
I'll vote yes.
And there was one, we addressed something, if, let's say, we do not have somebody to fill a position, didn't you say that there's a way to waive the term limit?
You can remain in place in, in most instances until your successor is appointed. That should take care of that if you're talking about.
Should there literally not be an applicant or?
Correct.
Okay. So I vote yes, then. And we would have to work out how long and, excuse me.
That's the next page.
Time that we have.
All right. In terms of time, I'll look for some guidance here. Do y'all want to do this, or do you, because there's several more questions. I don't think we're going to get through this. And the, do you want to, having this as food for thought, do you want us to schedule the continuation of this first meeting in January? Because I think we'll probably have some more good debate between us, and go ahead and listen to TMDL.
Sure. Good deal.
Okay. So let's, let's stop right here on our questions, take those things down, try and put that back out along with the continuation of questions, and then we can move to the second item under tonight, which would be an update on TMDL.
Ellen?
And it'll have to be abbreviated.
Abbreviated, that's it.
I would note for you all that Ellen has provided an updated version of her memorandum that's in your package, should be at your place, and she will point out the change. But read ahead, is the, it's the estimated cost of compliance over the period has a little bit more variability in the second memorandum than the first.
Right. Basically, what you have at your seat now is just basically more information. You have another cost estimate. There are several cost estimates flying around, and the bottom line with cost estimates is until the EPA reviews the state plans during, during next year and finalizes the requirements, the cost estimates are going to continue to change. You've got kind of like a hot, you have a high and low range in front of you based on the fact that we can, as a city, select more cost-effective treatment options, and we're getting into the actual reporting and being able to get Pecosin-specific information in there. We're probably going to be on the low end of the, the cost estimates, but that is still a tremendous amount of money. What is going on right now is we're facing two deadlines. On November, excuse me, on December 28th, I'm going to submit a general treatment strategy to the Regional Planning District Commission. They're going to prepare a region-wide treatment plan, and that's going to be specific numbers. But it's going to be on a regional basis so that whatever we report can't go back into one permit or the other permit. And then the city has to provide the state with a report at the end of January that basically submits any information we want to correct with the state assumptions and provides resources needed. They've also asked for funding strategies and other needs we. They've also asked for funding strategies and other needs we might have, legislative needs permitting, streamlining permitting, that sort of thing. And I have laid out in the December 5th memo to council what the goals of the report would be from the city, what the strategy is, and what the options are. Do we, what we're trying to do here is provide as much information as we can to the state. So when these requirements are ultimately put in a stormwater permit that we have to follow in 2014, our voice has been heard. We've had a control in our, we've been able to control somewhat what those requirements end up being. The flip side is, we don't want to promise, we don't want our citizens to end up paying for more than they're required to do, and there's still a lot of unknowns in the program. So, basically, like I said, the memo pretty much lays out the strategy.
That's the short version.
Very short version.
Now, we received, and, and basically, I, I read the memo that we got from the state, I believe it was.
Right.
That basically said that the federal government was going back and redoing the model and the like. What can you, what can you tell us about that?
Here's the deal with the model. As of two months ago, anything we did had to be tracked by the model, and the goal was, whether or not we were accomplishing the goal was measured in terms of if the model set, whether or not the model said we had removed enough pollution. This is basically, what the states did is they went back and said, "We don't think this model's accurate enough to distribute pollution requirements or pollution loads on the local government basis." River-wise, yes. City-wise, no. So, the state and the EPA are still using that model, but what we're not doing is we're not using it on the local level. Basically, we have to provide the same level of treatment that what the state was requiring when they were using the model differently, but the reporting methods are different. So it appears that we got a break, but in reality, we're still kinda proceeding on the same track. What will happen is our permit will be written so that it will, basically, it'll say, "Pecosin or York County, you must provide these many treatment, this much treatment by year 2016, year 2017, 2018." But what it won't say is, "York County, Pecosin, you must remove this many pounds of phosphorus by 2016, 17, 18." The same amount of work, just measured differently, if that makes sense. So...
Okay. So, December 5th, we're gonna send out a, I'm, I'm sorry, December 28th, you're gonna send out the memo of what Pecosin...
I'm sending data to the Planning District Commission at that time.
And then, what's the timeline after that, so we're all...
What happens is after that is the Planning District Commission compiles all the data from all the different local governments in the area and comes up with a region-wide treatment scenario.
And is, what's that date?
Uh, that is mid-January. You, um, the, the commission will be asked to approve that at their January meeting. And then a few days later, we will get this document back as an appendix. We will attach it to our report, and we will turn in our report. Now, what I recommend is, if you also look at your handouts tonight, you have something called a state sample. While we are only providing actual numbers on a region-wide basis, this state sample is our opportunity to be very specific for the city of Pecosin as to what we can do, or what we're gonna do, what we're not gonna do, what we need in order to do that. So in other words, we, we would say, "We will investigate this type of treat, we would like to use this type of treatment practice, but we will only commit to using it if the state finds a way to give us credit for it in the model," or give us credit for it. You know, or we'll say, "We can come, you know, we can come in and work in our streams, but you have to streamline the permitting process so it's not so difficult to, to do work in a tidal stream." That's what this particular document would be for. This is the document that really allows us to give good information to the state about what the problems, the challenges are in meeting this program's requirements and what we can realistically do with our on-the-ground conditions.
Okay.
And this is where we ask for funding on this form.
Has everybody in the state kinda threw up their hands and said, "Okay, you know, we understand now, we lost the battle, we're gonna go along with what the EPA has"?
No, I don't, my impression from the statewide stakeholder committee meetings is everybody is still, there, there's some real, still some real issues with how this is being implemented. But the prob, with this submittal, this is our opportunity to kind of, like I said, control our own destiny and put in writing to the state at one time and to the EPA, "These are the issues. We don't have the money, the regulatory environment's not helping us out. So, we're committed to cleaning the bay, but you've gotta help us out." So, people are still bringing up the issues, but this appears to be the best way to report them and get them listened to.
I've read in your memo that you said that this isn't going away, but I know it's also a presidential mandate. So, what is the possibility, should there be a change of power structure in Washington? But it, you know what?
This program is the result of both a presidential order and a court case. The EPA was required by the court settlement to establish the pollution limits that it established. I think what, um, what really impacts the cost and the level of effort and the level of actually cleaning the bay versus putting on a show, I guess, is, or having the strange bookkeeping system and the computer model, is the details of how it is implemented. The EPA chose this program to come up with a new way of implementing environmental programs. This is kind of their big test in this, in something they call adaptive management, which we've talked about before. What we wanna do is, we wanna really clean up the bay. We want it, it helps us out. But the question is, are we, are citizens and people being asked to put a lot of money toward a program when we're still not sure the model's really getting us where we need to go?
I was told in October at the VML conference that the only thing that would change if there was ever a change in administration was that the dates could be drawn out a little more, but the, you know, it can't cancel the program.
The Clean Water Act does not have a schedule requirement in it. So, that might be a way to extend the timeframe. But I mean, we've been cleaning the bay since the 1980s. We want it clean.
The other, the other big question is, what, what specifically can Pecosin do to clean the bay? And I think we're all willing to do our part, and I think we've shown that by adherence to the Chesapeake Bay Act. Okay? The question really is, how can we affect runoff from what I call upstream, you know, or the, the point sources that feed? We certainly can't filter, you know, so it's kinda like, we can spend millions of dollars and make this much difference in Pecosin. Or we can spend millions of dollars as a state and make this much difference at an upstream source. So it's kinda like, well, where's that balance? 'Cause if, if we build more ponds, it's not necessarily going to get the results that they're looking for.
Well, and we all know...
I think that's what it comes down to.
We all know for years that, you know, the western part of the state, you know, has been, they've ignored or have, or haven't been required to do a lot of the, you know, the cleanup things, and, you know, everything flows down to the Ches Bay.
That's correct.
And, you know, we're stuck.
And that's, and that's, I think the fundamental question is, so in what Pecosin, and that's why the, the meeting here tonight is to talk about what Pecosin's going to say.
I guess one question...
What's on our, what's on our list?
What's on our list? We need to put in more structural practices. That means more wet ponds, sometimes. That may mean more, it means more street sweeping, for example. One of the things that's nice about the, seeing the, the model results actually, was seeing what sort of pollution we can really target. I mean, by installing the sewer system, we've pretty much wiped out the nitrogen requirement. We're, we're doing more than, our citizens are doing more than their fair share with the nitrogen, just because we, they're paying HRSD every month to treat their sewage. Sediment is an issue. We've got two types of sediment. We've got tidal-borne sediment that comes into the city, but we also have sediment that's created by everyday living. Street sweeping is something we can do. Nutrient management. Encourage citizens to look for alternatives to fertilizing their lawns or over-fertilizing their lawns. Planting more plants. Instead of grass, if we go to bushes, if we go to trees, we do two things. First of all, we help the environment because we have more nutrient uptake through the roots, but the other thing that we do is, plants and trees tend to absorb more water than just grass does. So we've also helped the amount of runoff we're getting into our streams during flooding situations. Won't help with the big storms, but it might help a little bit at a time. It, the...
But those seem like low val, what I'm saying is, what you're describing there really doesn't sound like, you know, multi-millions of dollars.
What happens is everything adds up, and the other thing is the extent of work we need to do is, is pretty large.
Okay, so...
And we're doing, so we're gonna, you know, if you have to do that much street sweeping, suddenly we don't have enough employees to be full-time street sweepers. We may need more equipment than we have now. The equipment we have may need replacing. We need to dispose of the sediment.
But again, on that, we would probably ask for, we would at least ask for state...
Correct.
State help in doing that to meet the overall state guidelines.
Right. Now, as you read through the memos, what you're gonna see is, right now, the state's not planning on paying for that. They're planning on paying to treat V dot roads, and that's about it. What you will find is, is if we get, as we get into the more detailed cost estimates, right now, they're just so preliminary, they're not really useful. But as we get into the more detailed plans, what you're gonna find is incrementally, each treatment measure may not seem like that much money, but it adds up to a tremendous amount of money. And there's also the cost, when you're retrofitting an existing developed area, of buying land, of tearing up what's in the ground now to replace it with treatment measures.
Is that on our initial thing of what we will do?
What we're gonna do is, we're gonna start with what they call low-hanging fruit. For example, I looked at all the city-owned property. Where can we put, where can we plant vegetative filters? Where can we put rain gardens? Where can we expand a ditch and turn it into a pond? That sort of thing. So you do the property you own first, you do the treatment measures that are most obvious and can do the most good for the least amount of money. And then after those are done, you get into some of the more creative treatment measures. There's also some new ones that aren't allowed right now that may have a, a lot of potential. Ones called floating wetlands. You literally stick baskets inside a pond, and you have wetlands floating in the middle of the pond. Right now, it's not accredited treatment practice, but it's showing a great deal of practice. Virginia Beach is starting a study of those.
Will there be a budget component of, of TMDL this year, in this year's 2012 budget? 2013 budget, I guess I should say.
Yes.
We don't know yet how much it'll be, though.
No, I haven't put that together yet. I mean, Ellen and I have talked about 150,000, 200,000, something like that, to begin to ramp towards it.
Well, that's a drop from...
Relatively speaking, it's a drop in the bucket compared to the larger numbers. We'll get to the larger numbers at some point, but I don't believe that the state is, or the feds are at any level of certainty that would allow us to, to move forward with, with great energy in the short term while they're working these other things out. That may change, but...
Well, I'm fearful, and that, and this is a statement, I'm fearful to invest more taxpayer money when we're unclear whether we're gonna get credit for money we've already invested. But it, it is a fundamental issue of me to make sure that if we're gonna do something, that we're gonna get credit for it. So, is there a way that it's gonna be accounted for differently that we're now getting credit for if we invest 150,000 dollars? No way that they can say, "Well, that was, that was before"?
Everything we are doing right now counts toward the ultimate goal, or counts toward getting us credit. We would only select measures at this time that would get us to that ultimate goal. Floating wetlands may be, you know, the saving grace, but until someone gives us credit for it, we're gonna wait to do those. The other thing I would mention is, we're also looking at treatment practices and that serve another purpose, primarily flood control, safety on roads, that sort of thing.
You say that in your memo that our surface area constitutes seven one-hundredths of a percent of the total area.
But if we spend the money...
That's Virginia. We're one-tenth of one percent. I might be wrong on that. We're even smaller, obviously, of those.
But not much, or this big amount of money we're going around, that was the point.
Well, and if you actually get online and you see what some of the other larger counties say in Maryland are starting to project for cost estimates, it's, it's staggering.
But if we follow up on Jean's question in how we spend 150,000, if we do it on city-owned property, then we're safe as far as not throwing away money.
Right. Well, there's two things. We may be able, if we had a consultant who's been doing some of these measures, that would help tremendously. And the other thing is, some of the, you know, there's a combination of getting design professionals in to help, and also starting the treatment practices that will really do us some good. And getting a plan that is ready to roll. What we found last year during the grant application process is, they look at this region and they say, "The Hampton Roads Planning District Commission is doing all your planning. We're not gonna get a grant for planning. What we're gonna get a grant for is either public outreach or putting something physically in the ground." So if I can get a consultant to do a, a plan that's ready to roll, maybe we can get a grant.
You're talking about like a one-year consultant?
Correct. Not a permanent, do-the-program consultant, no.
Ellen, do you know of things like the Filterra system, which I, I know there's a better one out there, are they acceptable?
They're, the proprietary structures like Filterra and some of the other storm, precast storm drainage units that you and I have talked about are not listed as acceptable, acceptable measures yet. Apparently, supposedly, they will be put in, but once again, we gotta wait till they get put in that model before we get credit for them.
Yeah, 'cause on some of the old outfalls, it would make so much more sense to use something like that rather than try to put a pond in the middle of it.
Right. It would do two things. It would close up dangerous ditches, but three things, it would provide a shoulder on roads that don't have a shoulder, and it would provide the treatment. But we have to wait to get the credit.
So can we, I guess our next thing, 'cause the one thing that I wanna be is out in front as the city, and I think we have been so far with sending letters to them, but if we have specific things that we want them to focus on getting approval of, then we should send that in a letter, post haste, to them to say, "We want to do the following things, and we're recommending that the EPA and the state environmental, that they speed up the approval process for those things so that we're perceived as a player and trying to make, to push this envelope, not just waiting for them to tell us what to do."
That is kind of what this document is gonna do.
That'll put us in a better light.
That will put us in a better light. Right now, I think the EPA and the state are in kind of a holding pattern until they see these documents.
I think we're in a holding pattern until the 2012 election. And I just, I just wanna make sure that, that we're perceived as being out in front, and I don't want any criticism, 'cause I think the city of Pecosin has done a really admirable job of sewer in 100% of the city, being out there with the, the ponds, and I think we're way in front of the state today. And I just wanna stay there. So, that's, that's my only recommendation.
Ellen, one thing, but when, when they go back to relook at the model...
Yes. Yes.
As Jean stated earlier, you know, there are many cases where the primary pollutants are way upstream, and they're coming from the western part, down the Rappahannock, the Potomac, and so forth. And, and for the primary pollutant sources to buy green points that may wind up down here, okay, to clean up the bay after it all goes down the river and into the bay and down to here, is, is really not the right way to do that. Is there any chance in the relook of the model that they may actually take care of those pollutants at the source, so they really don't come down the rivers to the bay and they monitor that?
Well, remember, the model divides things up by river segment. So the people who are in the Potomac River watershed, since the Potomac River is more polluted than, say, the York River, have higher pollutant removal requirements than the York River people do. People who live on the bay supposedly have fewer pollutant removal requirements than people who live upstream. Now, there are questions about how accurate the model is and whether it's been calibrated correctly and whether there's enough monitoring stations to really do that. Supposedly, that is built in there. Supposedly, we are getting credit for work we've done, at least from January 1st, 2006 on. What I'm doing, I mean, for the next month and a half, what I'm doing is basically going through every piece of correspondence. We've been through all the files and looked up how much treatment we have. We're gra, we're documenting everything we have done. Now, we'll have to wait and see what the, the state does with that information, but it's a two-pronged approach. One is, what is the best cost-effective way for Pecoson to do its share to clean the bay under this new program? The second thing is, how do we play in the state and the EPA's bookkeeping system? And cleaning up the bay is a technical question. The bookkeeping, the other question is just trying to figure out what they're doing and what is the best way to make them aware of, of all the good stuff we've done and to get credit for it. And that's a whole lot more frustrating and a whole lot more complicated than figuring out the measures, so.
Okay. Well, I apologize.
One quick question.
Go ahead.
Did you ever think when you went from part-time to full-time that you ever run into TMDL?
Ellen.
No, you don't have to answer it in public.
Our thanks, our thanks for, for keeping us out in front on this issue. My apologies to the public for running the meeting over. It's an important subject to us, and there, and if it's important to us, then there's a reason, and that's our representation of the citizenry. So thank you for keeping us out in front. We look forward to your memo and push the limits of what we have done.
If you have ideas, I'll be around all December. Merry Christmas.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ellen. You're doing an excellent job.